Good evening and welcome to the Special Commission Meeting for July 7.
Yep, thank you. I'm probably loud enough as it is, but good evening and welcome to the Special Commission Meeting for July 17, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Now if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
Commissioner Sazan.
Here.
Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Mayor Doctor.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move right into public comments for non-agenda I don't believe that I have any paperwork for non-agenda items, so we'll close the public communications and comments, and we will move right on to our item of business. D1 Fiscal Year 2026 City Tentative Budget and Millage Presentation. Can I have a motion called, please?
Oh my goodness, I am so sorry. She was... I move to adopt the tentative millage rate for the fiscal year 2026 budget at...
Do you want me to do the presentation and then at the end you do the motion because you will have better information to recommend a rate?
I would recommend that, yes.
Okay, we can do that.
Perfect.
Please.
Do I need to rescind my motion?
No, no, fine.
Okay, got it, want to make sure.
It's this song?
Yeah.
So, good evening Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. Thank you for the opportunity to be here presenting. This is the tentative millage presentation. So if you have any question during the presentation, please don't hesitate to ask me. First of all, I want to say why we are here. Per Florida statute, we have, we are required to have three meetings. One is the, to adopt the tentative millage, because we have to inform the property appraiser or of our intention as a city by August 1st. Let's say we default on this. If we default on this, what the property appraiser is going to do, they're going to put by default the rollback rate, which is higher than the current rate. We don't want that, so that's why we're, it's important to have this meeting. I believe we have another meeting on the calendar in corporate, next week, but if we adopt a tentative millage today, we can cancel that meeting because that's a makeup meeting just in case we don't agree today. So, so we have deadline July 29 to fill out the DR 420, and August 18, the property appraiser will mail the trim notice to the property owners. September 3 to September 18, we have to do the first hearing to certify the budget, and then in the second hearing, we adopt the budget. We recommend the budget and we adopt. This is called tentative millage, so by default is tentative budget as well. So, going to start with some high-level economical and operational challenges that us and every coastal community in Florida is having. Employ recruitment and retention, labor shortage, labor and material cost inflation, market instability, interest rates, natural disasters, property values, market manpower available to complete the projects, because sometimes we have the will, but there's not enough manpower to complete projects, and funding capacities. So the main sections of the budget is the business operations, and this is to maintain all levers of service. Capital Improvement Plan, which is just to invest back to the community and the debt The executive summary, the total net budget is $28.5 million, but this is, is the cost of personnel and operation, also the debt service. It doesn't include the capital improvement projects. So the investment in the community is for 2026 is 17 millions. Now, the 17 millions of CIP includes the budget of 2026 plus what is already in the plan from previous years. So this is just to give you an extent. I'm going to start with the end, where the budget, the total budget is $47 million. Now, this is not for this year, this also includes the carry-forward from last year of projects that CIP, we were estimating 17 millions of CIP that is included in this final budget. So this is how we are distributing the budget in different programs, so I'm going to just leave it there for a minute if somebody has any question, but this is a very high lever how, how the money is distributed. I'm going to turn, but if I'm going too fast, Commissioner wants to keep looking at any slides, just please let me know. So now we are going to the Capital Improvement Plan. So this is again how we are distributing the CIP by program. So I'm just going to leave it for a minute. You see the majority of the larger is infrastructure, and this mostly is coming from general fund. And then wastewater, which is enterprise fund. Enterprise means that it gets the revenue from rates, so it... Then this is the same CIP, but this time by fund. You see that the general fund is paying for the majority of the CIP projects. Stormwater, solid waste, wastewater there are enterprise funds. They don't consume the, add valoring or general fund money. Okay, and this is the budget, CIP budget for 2026, and this is the top 10 projects. Now, this needs to tie with the strategic plan and the commission's priorities. The commission can at any time change the priorities and let us know what projects they want to add or fund or unfund from this list. As you see, there is a side note there, something that I don't want to talk about it, but we have to. The Public Safety Building is not in the budget at all. It could be included in the CIP plan, but it's not in the budget. So when, when, in September, when we approve the budget, we are approving for CIP two things. One is the five-year plan, but we're only budgeting for 2026 and prior years. So 2027 and further is not budgeted.
Victor, all of these, just to make sure everybody understands, all of these capital improvement projects here are ones that have been budgeted in this current fiscal year, and we're just carrying forward these into 2026.
Correct.
There's nothing new, there's nothing new on here that hasn't been discussed and hashed out by either this commission or previous commissions.
Correct.
But, but as you said, anything's on, anything on here, because we haven't spent it, is, is, can be changed if this commission so decides.
If they change their mind or priorities, because different commission, you can, with a 3-2 vote, we can unfund a project or fund another one.
Thank you.
What we cannot do is that, let's say we have $5 million for the master pump lift station, right? So there's a new project coming in, and we cannot say, well, let's use this money. We cannot do that. What we have to do is unfund this first and fund the other one, and then we can use the money for that one project.
All right, thank you.
Are these numbers here, like the latest numbers, like are these what Gary thinks he can build the master lift station for and things like that?
Yeah, I would say that after September, after you approve the whole, because I believe we're going to have a deeper CIP meeting workshop budget that I will include the Capital Improvement Plan, but when you, when you approve a CIP plan for the 2026 column of the CIP, it's not, it's not only you are approving the budget, it's almost a mandate, so you are telling us to go ahead and proceed with those projects. So that's how CIP should, should work. So you are approving the budget, but you, it's a mandate for, for us to, to go ahead.
And just one other question on that list. The solid waste side loader, that's something we still need even if we were to outsource the trash?
So if you outsource the solid waste, that's, that's another discussion. I don't think you need this project, but I have to budget as, as is, because what we do is that we take this money back to the enterprise fund.
Well, what's interesting, when you, when you put it that way, some of the carry-forward items, one of the carry-forward items that's not on there, and I'm glad that it's not on there, but it was $830,000 for two new garbage trucks. That had been on our capital improvement plan before, and it's not on here, so I'm not sure why that would have been taken off if we're still waiting on the final financial numbers to make the, the final decision on outsourcing solid waste.
So same thing, I will assume that if we continue doing the servicing house, we can rediscover if we need two additional trucks and put it back, but I believe, and this is what I believe, I'm not positive, that in a previous board meeting, it was said that we should just take it and don't bring it back, so we took it out of the CIP plan. I may be wrong on that interpretation, but...
I mean, I think that was the intent, but we hadn't, again, until we finalized whether we're going to outsource or not, we, we weren't prepared to do that. But anyway, I don't want to hold your presentation up, I just noticed that was not on here.
Yeah, I like the interactive conversation. Okay, so now I bring the Public Safety Building, because I took it out of this slide, but then now I bring it, and this is some considerations that I think are important, but this is me, only one player. I have to add here the consideration, or the considerations that the commission may have about this building. So it's just a couple of things to think about it. Are we going to do a combined building, fire and police, or we're going to do a fire dedicated building? So about the cost estimate, and I put it here in bold, and that this is without, on a feature or writing quote, and this is my, my best guess. I'm not an engineer, but if I want to talk about debt service after, I have to guess a cost, so I'm guessing eight to 12 million dollars. An estimate is a guess. So I, I, we have to consider that the difference between a combined building and a fire dedicated building cost could be minimal, and the annual payment difference could be very minimal as well. So when, when the time comes that we're quoting, I think we should take all of this in consideration, and I'd be, I'd be happy to help taking a dedicated decision. Grants insurance, this slide, when I created this budget, I had to have a cut day. That was the estimate, but as of today, we had received $4.9 million of disaster losses, and also $500,000 of flooding insurance money, and like $83,000 for vehicle. So for the total of 6.4, 6.5 million dollars.
Yeah, I guess I just disagree with that one bullet. I mean, the difference between a, could be minimal. I mean, the debt service on 3 million or 4 million dollars to me is, is somewhat substantial. I mean, I don't know how we can say that it's, it's, it's a minimal. I mean, that, that, that's, that doesn't add up to me, but...
So, so I'm happy for the disagreement because I've been wrong before. So, and that's why I don't like to guess. I like to have educated and official estimates when we're talking about financial, so I...
Well, and I mean, we, we had, we have an estimate. I mean, it's what they put together. It's 12,600 square four, 12,600 square, four square feet at 850, you know, dollars per square foot, and it was $10 million is what they, what they had. And that's going from an 8500 square foot building to a 12,604 square foot building, so an increase of like 50%, huh?
Would you pass that to me?
Sure.
Yeah. And, so, yeah, we need to have as much information as we can to have educated decision at the end of the day. So again, the, the building could be, or 10 million is inside my estimate, eight to 12. So now let's pass to talk about debt service in case we have to get along to, to build this building.
Victor, hold on just a second, because I don't want us proceeding with incorrect information here. The numbers that Commissioner Clark just mentioned, he said, "We're going from an 84, 8500 square foot facility to a 12,600 square foot facility." I don't think that's correct. I think the, the new facility, the 12,600, was only like 1,000 square feet more than the old combination of fire and police station that we had before. The chief of police is back there. Chief Barkley, do you, am I correct in stating that or not?
With me personally...
Hold, hold. Chief? Again, I know, I know.
From the sheet that they gathered, so if it's wrong, it's wrong, but I...
Okay, no, let's get some clarification on that.
I have my budget numbers with me. I do not have the square footage of the old facility, but the new facility is about 1,000 feet more than police and fire combined.
Okay.
From what I remember, and I don't want to guess, Commissioner Clark, but I think the 8,500 of what you're talking about was the fire bays and the fire station itself, not including the police. The police facility was about 3,000 square feet, and let's, again, I'm going on, on memory on that.
Okay, thank you.
I can get you exact numbers at any time, I just, I might have my budget book, but not the...
To what we're trying to do today, but I just didn't...
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
I understand that my, my new supervisor, the city manager, is one of his priorities to get the, the project rolling, so we're going to be getting as much information as possible. Make the estimates official, make all the numbers official.
Okay, thank you.
For the board to take a decision. Now, in order to do that, in the current budget as presented, we, we don't have the money, so, and we will not be having a balanced budget if we include that in the CIP for 2026. So I'm assuming that if we are going to go ahead and build a building, we need the 10% design fees and at least half of it for 2026, and then the other half for 2027. But if we're going to get along, we're going to get one loan and have the proceeds and the bank making interest for two years, to avoid having two loans. So this is, talking about debt service, this is how the interest has been moving the last year, and this is just informational, this is out of our control, it's just for you to, to understand how, how it's moving, and then the spread on the, on the base points, which is the, the spread from the interest rate that the Fed has, has been very, very high, 26, 38, 57 base points. So this is the way, using the source bond buyer, this is national. So this is how municipalities are spending money. This is the black to the top are inflows, and the red to the bottom are outflows. So in the last couple of months, has been a lot of spending, and it's because of all the inflation that are occurring in the market, and this is mostly CIP. And because of that, the, what municipalities are getting are borrowing, and this is, is higher every year. And sometimes it's not because they have more projects, because some of these projects in CIP has been raising 50, 100%. And again, this is just informational, so you know how the market is moving. So now we're talking about specifically Treasure Island. This is our outstanding debt. So if you see, we have one loan for, that we own only 653 on principal so far, so we're going to be done in 2027, it's going to be our last payment of that, that one loan. So that loan, if we're going to refinance, I don't want to touch that loan, because it's going to be paid off in two years. So if, if I'm going to refinance something and put it together with a new loan, I will refinance the, the, the second loan.
The, I'd asked this question at previous meetings, and I don't think we ever got the answer to it, is the, the interest rates on those two loans, would you happen to know what they are? And the only reason I ask is my recollection is that they're very low, they're like a 2.75% or something like that. So the problem with combining one of these loans with the 4.5% loan, I mean, that's fairly clear, so you, so you may want to just consider, because the interest rate on this is so low, is leaving this one alone.
So you are 100% correct. So if we, when we do the analysis, we're going to pay way more, we're not going to do it. The only benefit to refinance even with higher, where it has to be slightly higher interest rate, is for cash flow purposes, like let's say paying 1.5 million dollars versus 900,000 yearly. So that, that would be the only benefit, but based on the timing that these loans were acquired, I, I'm 85% sure the interest is lower, but I'm going to get the interest for the next meeting to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the cost of a new loan based on estimate and current market conditions, and this is $10 million. So I have numbers for 15, 20, and 25 years. So if we were going to get this loan today, I will recommend the board to go for the 20 years, because if you compare 15 years to 20 years, we get an annual saving on cash flow of over 100,000. Now that, when you compare 15 versus, 20 versus 25, you only get a benefit of like $80,000, so my, my, just looking at these numbers, I would prefer the 20 years period for, for, for a loan.
Oh, I definitely like the lower cash outflow, but it's, the difference in total interest paid on the 15-year loan is, is, is 3.875 million versus 5.64 million on a 20-year loan. So we're paying another $2 million roughly in interest by going the extra five years. So that's why, I mean, we can talk about this when, when it's appropriate.
When the time comes.
Yeah, but, but for to save, what, the only $143,000 a year in debt service payment, I don't see that as a good trade-off, but again, that's a topic for future discussion.
I, when the time comes, I need to talk to the city attorney, because we have a charter who limits the way we, we get borrow, and so the way we have to do it based on the charter, I believe, is that we, we have to provide a bid for, for the banks to answer, but in that bid, I want them to provide multiple options, because some penalty-free options are more expensive, but, but then you can repay. Another thing in the long run that I want to do is to make this city ready in the structure to go for bonds, which are usually cheaper than, than loans. Right now, we don't have the structure to, to get bonds, but I believe we have to take a look at, at those. look at those structures. So does this match your numbers, Commissioner Clark, that you had?
Oh, my numbers were, well, my numbers were from, yeah, 12,000 square foot building, 800 square foot, 10 million, 10.7 million dollars. That's what originally the sheet put together.
So, yeah. And Arden, it clearly says on here that the current existing police and fire area, 8525, and 12,604 is the new, and the increase is 4,079. So this is straight from the city. So if I'm, if it's wrong, I'm reading, I can read numbers, so I mean, if it's, this is wrong.
Okay. All right, we'll get clarification. I heard Chief Barr say multiple times it was only the difference of about 1,000 square foot. So if it's, so let's get that cleared up later.
Okay, so.
I think what we need to do is figure out what we could really build, you know, either a combined building or just a fire station, and what it could really be built for. And from what, in talking to Gary, I think a lot of this stuff could be built for less than what we're talking about. And then maybe it makes a lot of these numbers a lot better looking.
That's why it's important to get one estimate.
Yes, sir. If I could, Mayor, if I could just have a little bit of time, build lots and lots of buildings with public money, I'd like to bring you guys back a couple of courses of actions with recommendations and get going. But that won't happen in the month of August. If I'm bold, I'll have you something in September.
That would be wonderful.
Good.
So now we're gonna, we discussed like operational expenses, high lever. We discussed CIP, but now let's talk about revenues. And I left it for that because this is what we are intending to approve today. So the revenues, this is just, I'm gonna go through a couple of slides, and this is just general fund, because that's what we are approving today. So other taxes, 2025, we lost a lot of revenue in almost all revenue sources because of the storm. So if somebody has any questions about any specific revenue, just let me know. This one, I'm gonna just leave it for a little bit because this is what is affecting the mileage. And we have a mileage today of 3.8129. And this is actual revenues, 25 estimates because we're not over, and 2026 budget or projections.
And your estimates are based on information you got from the Pinellas County Property Appraisers Office?
Correct. So that's why you see about 600,000 on revenue loss for tax value going down. And this is estimated as current rate.
So when we take a look at this, I understand this is ad lorm taxes. And basically, it says that we're going to be close to 600,000 dollars short. How does the insurance money that we're getting play into? I know it's a little bit convoluted because it's not a revenue source, but it is.
Your mic's not on.
Still is coming in.
Correct. So if you compare it.
I'll remember to do this sooner or later. Oh, mine's still on.
So let me, it's more complicated than that. Like, let's say, we got 5 million dollars of insurance money, as I said previously, 5.4. Now, if you add that to the 10 million, you can say, hey, we got 15 million, so last year was 11 million. But you cannot consider it like that because we're not taking consideration here, the expenses that probably are higher than the 5 million dollars that we incurred, like the public safety building. It's not apples with apples. So we have, we would have to do a larger analysis and put there the expenses of everything we have to fix because of the hurricane.
Correct. I understand. That's what I said with the ad lorm. You know, that's 23% of what the property tax is, but that money's got to be made whole somewhere.
Correct, correct.
Hey, I did it again. So everybody at home, I'm sorry. This is only the second meeting that we're actually on, off, on, off.
I have a question. So that's a 5.5% decrease that the tax revenue, right? You know, I had heard that, you know, 8%, and then I had heard, was it, Arden, I think you know, Sanibel said like 10, right?
Right.
So are we comfortable with the 5.5%? Number one. And then number two, I've also heard that, and I guess we're only talking about 26 now, but 27 could be even worse. Are we factoring all that in?
27, if we even keep, still have property taxes, because right now, DeSantis is talking about property taxes, and that's a conversation that could affect our revenues. And it's not something that I want to discuss because we don't have control of that, but if you want, if we want to project two years, it's gonna be harder. Like, sometimes in one year, we can get it right, because the property taxes values are not official until, I believe, August 8.
Well, no, I get it, but the hurricane is what's affecting this and all of the properties that are, you know, the decrease in the cost of the properties and the fact that, you know, whether the new places will be built or not. I mean, that, to me, that's what's causing the variability that we're gonna see. And I mean, it could, that's difference between 5%, 10%, it's material in my mind. And then if 27, it's gonna be worse, and that's, you know, maybe it won't be, but yeah.
Mike has a comment.
I just wanted to clarify the estimate for, or the projection for 26. We got the, we projected to go down in property value by 5.6%. And that came directly from Mike Twitty at the Property Appraisers Office. So it's not 8, it's not, originally, I had, personally, I had about 8% in. But once we got the number in from Mr. Twitty at 5.6, that's what we locked in on.
Okay.
And I do believe that that may vary one more time. If does, I hope it's to the good, but.
Why do we believe that we're going to see the ad lorm taxes go down in 2027?
Once again, yeah, stand up and give me the cues. But why do we believe that we are going to have less ad lorm taxes in 2027?
I don't, I don't know yet. I'm projecting 26.
Yeah, he said he didn't wanna predict that.
I don't have the.
Okay. Because from what I understand, that the Appraisers Office basically does believe that we'll be recovering in 2027. I can't tell you if that's 5%, 8%, whatever it is, but the ad lorm taxes, you know, and the revenue will probably continue to go up.
That vary depends who you ask. For 2027, what, some people have been talking about market correction, like, some people are saying that we are currently in a bubble similar to 2007. So I don't know how the market, we react, like, the United States experts has been wrong on that. That's why I don't project two years from today, because a lot of things can happen, and I don't have the data to.
No, I actually think I got that from, I mean, Mike and I talked a long time ago, and it's probably been updated, but originally, it was like, they thought it was gonna be like a two-year downturn before it went back up. And maybe that's been changed now by Twitty. I don't know.
Okay.
So this is permits and fees.
I looked at this one, and I think we're gonna recover a lot more on permits and fees. I think we're gonna be at least back to the levels that we were in 2023 and 24, if not more. But anyway, and I'm not suggesting you change anything for the purposes of this meeting, but as we, as we refine the budget going forward, there's at least 50,000 dollars, maybe 80,000 that you could safely add to that budget for next year.
And remember, this is a tentative budget. We still have time to make some corrections.
Exactly. And I know this is not a budget review. I'm just making an observation.
And I'm hearing everything that commissions are asking and commenting, so to do a better presentation.
Thank you.
We got rid of TMN, we could probably double that, probably 1.6 million, because the houses would go up so much faster.
Okay, so next slide is intergovernmental. So you see this big revenue in 2024, that was ARP, Grand American Rescue Plan. So we got 3 million dollars in 2024, so that's why you see a big jump there. And this is charges for services.
This is another one that I thought was estimated for next year pretty low, because for five months in 2025, we didn't charge anything for parking revenues. So we lost, we lost a lot of money, and we'll be charging for parking even at the current rate. Where this account, you could probably add as much as 300,000 without raising parking rates at all. It's just, I think it's just underbudgeted. But again, I know you said we have time to make some adjustments. This is one thing.
We'll take a second.
One area, if you'll take a second look at that.
Yes. These fines.
And same thing here again, because it went down significantly. This is, I'm talking here mostly about parking fine revenue. It went down substantially because we didn't enforce parking for five months following the hurricane during 2025. So that should be popping back up to the levels of 2024. So there's some, probably another 100,000 revenue potential budget consideration here.
It is my understanding that we lowered our, the past commission lowered the parking fees, parking fines as well. So that's something we could look into, increasing the parking fines.
And I do remember that. You're right, they did. They lowered the parking fines.
Now it's better to pay a fine than to pay for parking.
Yeah, no, I was opposed to that, and apparently, it was a state, there were certain.
It is.
State regulations that forced us into doing that.
As far as the tickets and the fines, that we went to state levels. We were actually operating above state level.
And I remembered to turn it on.
I do not advocate for increasing fines, but the fines should be as painful like is that you want to pay the parking. Like, if you're going to park there the whole day, you're saying, well, I better pay the fine, then the fine is low. So I agree.
I do have a question. What are the underlying budget assumptions for net increase in parking revenue less expenses?
So we have not discussed the parking increases and how we're gonna use the revenues from those sources. I'd be happy to discuss that in a future meeting, to see what the commissioners want. We do know that we have the system and capacities to have a dynamic parking structure. I heard in one of the previous meetings that charge, let's say, tomorrow, or Saturdays charge a little bit more than Monday to Friday. Yes, we do have the system to do that.
But the budget right now assumes no rate increase for parking.
The budget as it is, we may bring something in September based on the board direction.
Right, but for right now, it doesn't have any rate increase in it. Okay, thank you.
I hope that we could have this conversation maybe the first, the next regular schedule meeting in August, and hopefully make the changes and have them implemented for Labor Day. That's my thought.
One of the things that you asked about, Commissioner Sazan, is our expenses. Our expenses for the entire year have had a third employee in the parking enforcement. We've not had that employee for the entire year. So the expenses are probably down, but what it does mean as well is that we are missing a lot of additional revenue because we have nobody working certain days, certain times, and mostly in the evenings from about 5:00 to 7:00 and on through. So it's going to be very different. I'd like to see, and I think that I had mentioned to Charlie, our city manager, that we needed to get that third person in place, because when we did do a third person for a very short period of time, when Mike Munger was here, the revenues in a single month had jumped almost 100,000. So that's part of it, is that just that we need to get somebody in that enforcement position and working for us.
Do we have that position budget and funded?
We do.
Yes.
Yes, we do. And Chief Barkley?
I ran into the parking enforcement gentleman at the Crowder Brothers Hardware Store, so I had a good conversation with him.
At the last meeting, I said we are in the middle of interviews. We are very close to making a job offer. He's just going through the background right now, and we could have him onboard as soon as the next week or two.
Great. Because that will start, and we'll see the revenue jump immediately.
Yes.
We keep talking about the parking fees, and like, I'm not against raising the parking fees. I mean, I think it could be a good thing for us, but the problem is there's like zero plan or any type of business plan behind. There's numbers are just drawn out of thin air. We're gonna raise it from four to six. Where's the analysis of if we move it to six, we're gonna get 90% of the Parkers, you know, and we know what that number is? What if we raise it to seven and we get 89% of the Parkers? That would be a better deal. But there's no analysis behind any of this. It's just, it's just raise it up to six, and we're gonna get 100% of the Parkers that we had at nine. I haven't seen nothing to back any of this up. I mean, I think it could be a good thing, but I don't, am I missing something?
Yeah, we did earlier in the year, in the fiscal year, we took a look at this extra person being in there and seeing that, you know, if we're covering more hours and all seven days, that it jumped by 100,000. So even before you would put a price increase onto that parking per hour, we're already going up about 100,000 per month. And so now, now you get, and that is done, I'll try to pull it out.
No, were you talking about enforcement or?
Enforcement.
No, I'm talking about fees, yeah.
The fees will be higher as well. If you take it up at an extra dollar, you're going to see even more than 100,000, because today, we would get that extra 100,000 with a dollar on top of the 4 dollars that we're charging today.
Oh, yeah, I get that, but at some point, we gotta figure out where the break-even point is on what the best price is. Like, where, what's the best price that gets us the most amount of revenue without losing the parking? There's like a, there's like a break-even point somewhere in there.
Right now, we don't have enough city parking spaces to even use, so people are willing to pay 20 and 30 dollars an hour in these private parking lots because it's the only overflow they have when they come to the beaches, which is why they're, all these vacant lots where people aren't wanting to build are putting parking lots because they're charging these ridiculous amounts. I went to park yesterday and pulled it up on my phone, PayMobile, and it was literally 60 dollars for two hours. So it, if people are willing to pay that because there's not enough parking spaces, we don't have enough parking spaces. Everybody knows parking is a shortage. So no, I don't have a spreadsheet that says it, but I do have common sense. And common sense says if we are overflowing anyway and people are paying 20 dollars an hour in private parking lots, they're gonna pay 6 dollars an hour or 5 dollars an hour.
Well, then I would raise it more than, I'd raise it higher than six. I'd make it eight.
I'm just stating a fact. The fact is, people are paying these private lots 20, at minimum 20 dollars an hour, depending on holidays, weekends, all of that. And so to think that we're going, when we don't have enough parking spaces to begin with, to think that we're gonna lose any people parking in a city parking lot, I mean, I just, I understand what you're saying, have graphs and charts and.
I'm just not used to like bringing this up with no data whatsoever. I mean.
My Google AI pops up stories on parking. I don't know if you guys heard, but in Pensacola, during the airshow, some private parking lots were charging 500 for parking during that. But that's why I came up with a dynamic pricing idea and west side of Gulf Boulevard. You ready to strike the hammer?
No. I was just trying to get everybody's attention. It's obvious to me, I know I'm new, third day. No, I was just trying to get everybody's attention. It's obvious to me, I know I'm new, third day. We need to do some homework on parking, bring you guys back some numbers at some different rates, what that would look like, fees versus fines, all that good stuff. If you give me a couple of weeks, I will bring that to you. If I have it by the first meeting in August, I will bring it to you. Not a winemaker. I just won't bring wine before it's time, right?
All right.
I'll, I'll get you something sooner than later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if you can additionally send to the city manager what's your opinion is so we can incorporate that into the analysis.
I will do. Thank you.
And this is miscellaneous. And what you see here, mostly this is interest payments for, for the bond money we have in the bank. But this 2025 includes the insurance proceeds. So that's why you see a big jump in 2025.
So that's where the revenue is showing up?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So now we, we discuss revenues, CIP and expenses. So what is a balanced budget? So it's a revenue should equal expenses plus reserve. So as you see, if every number here is positive, we will have more revenues than expenses, and that's called a balanced budget. So here is the, the same $47 million as presented previously. And this is in the uses and this, now this includes the carryforwards. Carryforward is projects, mostly CIPs that were approved in previous years. So we are, we didn't spend the money. So we're passing it until the commission unfund the projects or change priorities. So a total of 47 millions. And here we are expecting $32 million of revenues. But again, we're carrying forward about, this is an estimate. We will have a better number by the end of the year because we are still in 2025. So we're estimating the carryforward to be 70 millions. So that make it $49 million in revenues. So the $49 million in revenues minus the $47, $47 million in expenses or uses will add 1.8 million into a reserve.
So this is the high level look at next year's revenue and expenses. With, with, again, you can hear there's a lot of further discussions that we want to have about the specifics. But what you're, what you're projecting here is that we have, even without a millage rate increase, we have enough money to cover our operating expenses and our cap, our current capital improvement projects.
Correct. Given we don't have another hurricane or any other disaster.
Okay. All right, good.
So now we discuss the revenues, the budget. Now, this is the reason we're here, the true in millage, the trim. So taxable value, we went from $3.2 million to $3 million. So that's a decrease of 5.7%. This is our current millage, which is 3.8129. And this is the rollback rate. What is rollback rate? I'm going to explain it in the next slide for, for the benefit. I'm going to leave this slide here for a second so, so you can, if you have any questions on this. Okay. Rollback rate is a, is a tax that will generate exactly the same revenues that we received last year. So basically, every year when the tax value goes up, the rollback rate is lower. This year, because the tax value went down, the rollback rate is higher. Any questions about rollback rate? Okay. So this is what one millage does to our budget. So one mill represents $1 per $1,000 of taxable value. And this is for general understanding of what is one millage. So using our taxable value, .1 mill represents $300,000. That, that's the analysis. So what this means, that every time you increase .1 mill or decrease .1 mill, the difference in the revenues is 300,000. And these are the four options that every municipality in Florida has. So when you are adopting the millage or tentative millage, you have, you can adopt the current millage. You can adopt the rollback rate, which is, as discussed before, because the tax value is lower, now the rollback rate is higher. So what, that will represent the same amount of revenue. The current millage represents a reduction in revenues for, for the city. And then you have the option to increase millage, and then you have the option to decrease millage. Those are, are the four options that you have. Any question on this? So any question before I recommend a motion?
I do. What are the underlying budget assumptions for commercial redevelopment?
So I'm going to call, John, do you have any?
Right now, as far as I understand, there is no budget assumptions to see an increase in the non-residential tax base for us. I believe we heard, and Mike, I'm going to ask you to validate this. Generally, what happens with new construction, depending on when new construction receives their certificate of occupancy, it takes at least another tax year for that to hit our taxable values. So right now, we don't have any anticipated commercial development pulling their certificate of occupancies at this point for fiscal year 2026. We may see some slight increases in taxable value depending on some of the COs that will possibly occur in the 2026 fiscal year due to substantial rehabilitation, but nothing at this point for new construction. I just took a look at the new commercial redevelopment or the commercial development that's occurred on the island. Of course, now I just left my notes over there. But generally, the last new commercial development that came on the tax rolls was the Fusion Hotel back in 2019. Since 20, 2008, we had, in the last 17 years, including the Fusion, we had three other new construction, commercial developments. So not a lot of past activity in the world of non-residential commercial redevelopment.
Yeah, that's Oceana down this way on both sides, the Gulf and the Bay, and I think a couple of other properties. But, you know, in the works, if we all come together and discuss it, including LPA and PNZ, potential is the Thunderbird Beach Resort across the street where McDonald's was, Gator's property downtown, both sides of downtown. So.
Yeah, you know, future going forward, absolutely tremendous redevelopment opportunities. But the quicker that we can get plans approved, permits pulled, certificates of occupancies received, then we'll see more of that non-residential tax value add to what we need to do for municipal services.
But the bottom line is in 2026, you don't expect to see any additional.
I don't see, and this is just Joan as your economic developer, not, but not Mr. Twitty in his office. Yeah, I don't see tremendous uptick right now on the non-residential tax.
Thunderbird Beach Resort still hasn't filed a permit to tear down that property. So it could be three, four years, and that's a problem. So I have the same question for residential development, like number of new condos, number of new single-family homes and average values for each. But yeah, same thing.
The important things to know that we budget, we have to be conservative. So, so these affect the tax where when, when the CEO is provided, a certificate of occupancy. So right now, we are budgeting conservative. I, I wish I can, at some point next year, I was wrong. We're receiving a lot of more revenues. That would not hurt my feelings. So I think everybody would be happy about it.
Thank you, Victor. And thank you for the meeting earlier today.
Thank you.
I have one question that I've been trying to find out since March when I got on the commission here. Do you, how much unrestricted, unencumbered free cash do we have as a, as a city?
Okay. So by September, and this is one of the, of the steps that we have to take to be able to, to be ready for credit agencies and bonding, is to separate reserves and put it aside. And that includes a unrestricted, restricted and, and all of that. I think Mike has been doing a quarterly report on, on that amount. Do you have what that number is right now?
I reported it on the, the last time I gave a financial update.
I can report it back to you again next meeting. Yes.
Okay, so this would be a good time to ask for a motion.
I have the motion recommendation.
Okay.
And here is the, what I'm recommending. So I left that blank there because this is. And that's Tom.
Information. Yeah, I would let him go ahead with the motion.
Hold that, hold up, chief. Hold up.
We're going to, to go through with the, the motion.
Yeah.
And then we can.
And then he wants to give us his recommendations, right?
I'm, I'm going to discuss what this means. So this is the motion. The motion that I need today to be able to, to tell the property app, our intention is this. And this is, this is what happened. So in September, this is tentative. What means tentative? In September, you can go all the way to the rollback rate, but you cannot go below the, the rollback rate unless you put it here today. Like, let's say the commission wants to raise it and say five. So then you can vote for five in, in September. Now, I do believe that we have, with, with the current rate of 3.8129, we can cover the, the city expenses, operating, personal expenses and CIP. That's, that's what I, what I believe. So it is for you to recommend one, one motion. So I would say the motion and then pick the, the first one if you.
I move that we adopt the tentative millage rate for the fiscal year 2026 budget at the current year's millage of 3.8129 mills per $1,000 of taxable value. This tentative rate is based on at least 95% of the certified taxable value and complies with Florida statute. 200, everybody has a hammer now, 200 dot 065, including public hearing and trim notice obligations.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. We will open it up to public comment. Mark Hoey?
Good afternoon, Mark Hoey, District 3, 225104th Avenue. So good presentation, Victor. Look forward to the more detailed dive into the actual budget. But I don't want to jump into the future, which we are, without a little bit of look to the past, particularly with regards to what has happened or not happened on our mill, millage rate over the last 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 years. Each time, we've had the same discussion and reached a conclusion about either maintaining the millage rate or accepting or taking the option of a rollback. Interesting, we've never rolled back. We've taken the money. We kept the millage rate, but because property values were steadily rising, and in fact, significantly rising the last number of years, we took it instead of potentially taking the rollback and lowering the burden on the property owners while still having enough money to run the business. So I just want to put that out there. That time may come back. Right now, I'm not up here advocating cutting expenses to run the city if we're going to do the right stuff to redevelop this town. But I just don't want the commission to forget that we took the money. We took the increased tax revenue from property owners for years at a time when maybe that wasn't the wisest thing to do, but is the easy thing to do. And we didn't have to worry about whether we had enough to run, run the business. So I'll be here next year, God willing. And if indeed, for 2027, we see, wow, property values have jumped up. This is great. Look at all this extra money. I'm going to be up here asking you to take the rollback rate and give that money back to the, or at least not give it back, but reduce the burden on the property owners. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Carlos?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to just preface my comments by saying I'm not a numbers guy. You know, kudos to you. It's, you know, it's a great job. My understanding is that this rollback rate is going to be an increase in the millage rate. So that's important to, I think, to, you know, be completely clear about what we're saying, that we are planning to increase taxes. And I think that what Mark Hoey said was well taken, that, you know, previous years when the property values were increasing, we never rolled back. And, you know, I can understand that government never likes to give money back. And, and I think that, and, you know, Mark also said that, you know, he's not suggesting that we should cut expenses. But, you know, I am. I think that we should cut expenses. I think that we should be living within our means. So anyway, I have prepared comments. I've, I've given a copy to TF to share with you at some point in future. And I'll go ahead and, and give those comments at this point. I understand we're just talking millage, it's not like the actual. But hopefully in some future point, we can maybe address some of these comments. So first, the budget lacks transparency. The 47.2 million in expenses and 1.8 million reserve are clear, but operations, capital outlay and debt service lack detailed breakdowns. The proposed millage rate for reduction is vague and does not provide specific rates or revenue impacts. Just an example, St. Pete Beach FY26 process with public hearings sets a transparent standard that I think we, our city should match. I urge the commission to provide detailed financials moving forward with clear millage rate options. Second, personnel costs are a major concern. Treasure Island 17.2 million dollar personnel budget is significantly higher than estimated budgets in St. Pete Beach, which is 12 to 14 million, Madeira Beach, 5 to 7 million, and Gulfport, 4 to 6 million, despite our smaller population of 6,500. While our police force and trash disposal crew, unlike Gulfport's contracted services, add cost an 8.1% increase to 14.3 million with 10 new hires and a 10% rise in certain liability benefits raises questions about sustainability of these expenditures going forward. I request a detailed cost analysis. Third, significant budget variances need explanation. The finance department's contractual services jumped 315.5% from 8,000 to 33, 33,240 without justification. Emergency management funding drops 99% from 2.39 million to 24, 24.5. I'm not, I'm not sure I got the right numbers here, cutting hurricane expenses. Given the regionals hurricane risk evident and Madeira Beach's focus on stormwater upgrades, this could compromise preparedness. Would like to have these just, just changes justified. Fourth, economic risks such as inflation and disasters often lack contingency plans. St. Pete Beach and Madeira Beach, with estimated CIP budgets of 10 to 12 million and 5 to 7 million respectively, leverage state-funded resilience projects. We need similar strategies to protect our 1.1, sorry, 17.1 million capital improvement plan. Finally, some of the pages in the documents that were posted on, on, on the internet had unreadable pages and formatting errors. So it was hard to really clearly understand. Again, referring to St. Pete's beaches, their transparency is, I think, much better and something for us to, to try to, to match. I request the commission enhance transparency, justify personnel cost disparities, disparities, disparities with a detailed breakdown, ensure emergency preparedness, plan for economic risk and improve document clarity. Aligning with our neighboring municipalities will strike a balance between a taxpayer relief and robust services. Thank you, Commissioners. I know that you all care about this city tremendously. I know that you all care about this city tremendously, as most of the residents do, and we appreciate your efforts on our behalf and would like to recommend that we continue working to be fiscally responsible and remember that many residents, we have many wealthy residents, but we also have many residents who are not wealthy, who are in economic straits because of, you know, disasters that we had to undergo. So I would like to, and I believe you will consider that in your, whatever decisions you make in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Sarah Pennington.
Hi, Commissioner. First of all, I wanted to point out, Commissioner Dickey, I appreciate your concern about the total cost of the loans. That's exactly what was going through my head when I was watching this presentation. That was a missing piece. When we looked at a twelve-million-dollar loan over a fifteen-year, twenty-year, or twenty-five-year, it only showed us what our debt service payments were, but it never showed us how much in total we would be paying for those loans. And I think that's an important consideration for us. Since the hurricane, there has been a major focus on revenue because so much needs to be rebuilt in the city, so I understand that. But I want to point out that the situation that we're in with needing more revenue is not just because we got hit with hurricanes. The situation that we're in, in my opinion, is because we took in a whole lot of money a couple years ago with those increased property tax revenue, and we spent all that money. And we overspent, and we overspent, and now we're paying the price. And I think that we need to take a look at that. I think it's the really important missing piece of the conversation. When I was at the last meeting, I suggested, and I'm going to ask again, how can we open up a conversation about saving money? We need to look at our expenses. Can we get every department head in our city to come to a meeting and tell us, hey, here's where I found where we can save some money? I would imagine that there has to be some places that we can save money in our budget. We need to do that, not just to be good stewards of taxpayers' money, but also to avoid the situation that we're in right now. As we learned, hurricanes can happen, and what if this happened again next year and we've not gotten our spending under control? We've got to get our spending under control. I think that needs to be the number-one priority of our city right now. Definitely that personnel and administrative cost, I felt, were very high when looking on that. And I also, I emailed the city a couple weeks ago, everyone in the commission and the mayor, and I said, wouldn't it be great if we made a goal for having the lowest property taxes in the entire state of Florida? Whether that's realistic or not, what if we made that as a goal? How differently would we be looking at our budget in this city? How differently would things be happening? I think we really need to step back and look at the spending. I can't say it enough, I just think that we've got to get that under control, and I don't know how, I feel like I'm just a citizen that comes up here and just talks at every meeting, but what I'm saying, does it matter to you guys? Are you taking it into account? Does it actually turn into any action in the city? I don't know, but I would love to see that happen in regarding to spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else? Mike?
Mike Braddy, 11950 Fourth Street East, Isle of Capri and Treasure Island. You know, we're in a tough situation here. We just came out of two hurricanes, and I'm not hearing a lot of love back here for some of that. It's been difficult. We've gone through having to spend money we never anticipated having to spend. We're also different than these other cities. Everybody tries to say we're the same. We're not. We're all different. We happen to have our own police and fire, and I want to keep our police and fire. I do believe we should put a public safety building north of the city for both the police and the fire. I don't want to separate them. And I know that is going to cost us some money. It's not going to be for free. But I think we can work and try to get more grants. I've said, I think a couple times, I've got up here and I've mentioned that the Pinellas County has eight-hundred-something million dollars, but I've never heard here that we've ever got a penny out of that. And I think we should get something out of that. We've talked about our debt service. If we did have to fund a public safety building, of which we've got one-point-five million, we have some politicians saying we're going to, maybe in the next session, get some more. And I think Commissioner Dickey brought up a very good slide the other day, a couple meetings ago, about what maybe the cost would be and how to fund the debt service on that. I also looked at the numbers that were provided for the debt service, for the bonding. That was back in April, and it changes all the time. And I think as we go into the future, we're going to find the interest rates coming down. So the bonding interest rates are also going to come down. And we have a way, I think, with Commissioner Dickey suggesting about increasing the parking rate, and as Commissioner Vacquez said, she went to park the other day. People are paying twenty bucks an hour to park in these private lots. Why can't they pay six bucks to park in our lots? And I come out here regularly, you can't find a place to park at four bucks an hour. So I'm not saying we should overspend. I don't think we should. But I do like the fact that we have a city, that we have our own services. We don't depend on anybody else. We don't depend on any private organization to provide our services other than for the recycling. And I've watched those recycling people, and they pick up things that Pinellas County says you can't recycle. But you can talk them into it if you stand out there and they'll pick it up for you, you know? But I do believe we are a different city than the surrounding cities, and I'm concerned if we keep parcelling out our city services, in the long run, we're not going to get as good a service. And if we parcel them out to private companies, eventually, they got to make a profit. So they're going to eventually raise the rates because they've got to make a profit. They may come in cheap in the beginning. They may take our people on, they may take our trucks on, but at some point, they're going to say, we're not making money now. We're going to raise our rates, whereas we pay only what the cost is. So I think all of this has to be taken in when we're looking at the rates. And if we're keeping the millage rate where we're at now, I think one of the things you got to think about is we own a Bascule Bridge over the intercoastal waterway, and I think there's only one other city in the state of Florida that owns that. And that's a cost. We've got maintenance costs, and we got to provide for replacing that bridge in the future. And this past bridge, I believe, was about a forty-million-dollar expenditure, which we got from the federal government, with a little handshake on not charging any tolls. We may need to look back and see what we can do about that. But in the future, we still got to plan for one day, I'll be along on, thankfully, of replacing that bridge. So these are the type of things I think that a lot of people don't take into account. They just want the cheapest millage rate around, they want to be the lowest forever. If you want to be the lowest, move to Marco Island. They're very low. You're out in the middle of nowhere, but it's low. We're not going to probably be that way ever. We're probably not going to be the lowest in the whole beaches. It's just that we're a different animal. So that's my two cents. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section of it.
I have a question for Victor, if I could.
Question, sure.
Thank you. So I might say something that's controversial. So it's something that Sarah brought up, and I was debating whether I should ask her or not, but I think I will. So say the stars align, right, and we are allowed to redevelop our commercial properties that we have, Gators, Thunderbird, Downtown, and say there is an increase in heightened density, and like I said, the stars align. How low, if we were to maximize, you know, a plan, how low can we drop our millage, you know, based on the numbers of one point, you know, point-one mill is three-hundred-thousand and so on? Like, is it feasible if we had massive, you know, not massive, that's a bad word, if we had reconstruction or redevelopment, is that something that's feasible in the future?
To lower the millage rate is always possible.
Right.
I have to, when discussing 2026, I have to take into consideration only 2026 expenses, and then matches the millage with those expenses. But a decrease of the millage is always possible with a better scenario in future years.
I'll have to re-question that, re-ask that question another time, to phase it differently. I'll meet with you, we'll figure it out.
I'm always hoping, together with the city manager, to look at our expenses and to be efficient, more efficient.
Thank you.
Okay, any other communication, comments?
No, I just, I just wanted to say, as much as I'd like to accommodate Mark Hoy's request for a rollback rate, I don't think we're going to do it this year. So I know that this is not the time to do that, right, Mark? Anyway, just wanted to add that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vacquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and that is everything that we have for this evening, so we are going to adjourn.